Okay, that's a, that's a, that's a good, I didn't, I didn't wanna, I didn't wanna say that out loud, but I figured if you knew, then that must be where it is. Thank you for the assist.
Is everybody ready? All right, it is six o'clock, is ECAT ready? Terrific. So hello, everyone, and welcome to the November 7th Select Board meeting. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So just to let people know that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast on local cable. It's also on Facebook Live usually, so please keep that in mind. I just wanna start with Jen, and we're gonna go around and just introduce ourselves, so people at home know who we are.
I'm Senator Stacy.
Jamie Stebbins.
Mark Lamb.
I'm Dottie Fulgenetti.
I'm Craig Barger.
And our Town Administrator Connor Reed, Assistant Town Administrator Michael Blanchard, and our Executive Assistant Elizabeth. All right, so we would jump right into this. The first item that we have is a public hearing under Town Code Section 44-2, discussion and vote to schedule the annual town election for 2023. Do you wanna leave the public notice question?
Sure. In accordance with Chapter 44 of the Eastern Town Code, the Eastern Select Board will hold a public hearing in the Colleen A. Corona Boardroom, 136 Elm Street, Easton, Mass., on Monday, November 7th, 2022, at 6:00 PM. The hearing will include a discussion and determination as to whether the 2023 Annual Town Election should be rescheduled, provided it is not before April 15th and not later than April 30th of 2023. Interested residents will have the opportunity to present either oral or written information on their views. Those wishing further information may contact the Select Board's office.
Great. So Connor, do you wanna lead this?
Sure. So normally for this hearing, the Town Clerk would be in and be available to answer questions regarding the administration of the spring annual election, but the midterms are tomorrow morning, and the Town Clerk is dutifully working with her staff to prepare for that. So Dottie and I reviewed the memo and felt comfortable bringing this forward, because I think this is either the third or fourth year that the Board has made this decision. So your bylaws allow you to set the spring election any time in the second half of, half of April. For years now, since COVID, we've been holding the town election on a weekend, on a Saturday, which has been generally well-received, usually with a shorter period of time, rather than a 13-hour voting day, usually six. And next year, with the latest round of voting reform, there will be no excuse vote-by-mail for municipal elections as well. So particularly given that point, that there will be universal vote-by-mail available for those who request it, we felt, the Town Clerk felt, after reviewing dates with the principal, athletic director, DPW and other parties involved at the schools, that Saturday, April 22nd, would be a good day for the election itself in person. And again, there would be vote-by-mail available in advance for anyone who can't make it. And of course, anyone who's not around and wants absentee vote, they can do that, but that largely, you know, vote-by-mail is universal, it's not, it's no longer an issue.
So we've done this for the past few years, and one of the challenges with this is that we can either pick the beginning or the end of school vacation. One of the reasons that it's good and important to have it on school vacation is so that we can have this, you know, when the room can be set up and, and put back together on a weekend when there's no students there, like for activities and so forth, and the DPW has a chance to get the school set back up for Monday. And of course, we like it better to have it on a weekend, because for security reasons, it's not always, anytime we don't have to have an election in a school when school's in session, we think that that's better and more secure. So this is like the third time we've done it. I think that it's up to candidates, and, you know, we, we try to let everybody know by social media that this is happening at the end of a vacation, so make sure that people do, if they're gonna be away, get your absentee ballot or your no reason ballot, and just get those votes in. So we'll have to do a good job at letting people know that it's, it's election season and to get those in. Anybody have any comments or questions, or?
No, I don't.
Okay. Anybody in the public comments questions? All right. So if somebody would like to make a motion to have the annual town election for 2023 on Saturday, April 22nd, from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM at Oliver Ames High School?
So moved, Barger.
Second, Lamb.
Barger and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. Excellent. Okay, next up, we have license for common victualer license. Eva Carolos of Doing Business as Pizza Depot to Eva Shandowa Incorporated, Doing Business as Pizza Depot, 700 Depot Street in Easton. If you wanna come up and sit at the microphone there? Thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you.
And just introduce yourself, and tell us a little bit about what, what the changes are that you're looking at.
My name is Malakane from Pizza Depot. Actually, I'm not gonna change anything, I try to keep everything the same, no change, even the menu, and try to keep the quality up as I can.
Great. Well, that's good to hear, 'cause I know that it's very busy there, and, and that'll be great. I'm sure that people will enjoy having the same menu.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions?
Is this, is this a change of, of ownership, or is it just a change of name, or?
No, it changes ownership.
Ownership, okay, okay. As long as you keep the same quality that I see every Friday night, that's fine.
Comments or questions from the board? All right. So where am I here? We're gonna make a motion, and it's gonna be subject to satisfying pre-opening inspection requirements and obtaining a new food service permit with the Board of Health prior to opening. So you'll get some paperwork, Michael, that explains what you have to do to satisfy those requirements. So just keep that in mind. And if you have any questions, Michael Blanchard, the Assistant Town Administrator, will be happy to help you.
Okay, perfect.
Okay. So if somebody would like to make a motion to, to award the common victualer's license to Eva Shandowa Doing Business as Pizza Depot, transferring it from Eva Carolos?
So moved, Barger.
Second, Lamb.
Barger and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. Great. Thank you for being here tonight, and thank you for choosing Easton to do business. We wish you a lot of success.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Okay, we have a one-day liquor license for a concert at Oaks Ames Memorial Hall for a fundraiser at Three Barrows Street on Friday, December 2nd, from 5:00 PM to 11:00 PM. Joan Lundgren and Frank Galteri have applied for a one-day beer and wine license for a fundraising concert for Oaks Ames Memorial Hall to be held at the Hall Friday, December 2nd, from 5:00 to 11:00, and Easton Police Details not required for this event. Anybody like to make a motion?
So moved, Lamb.
Second.
Lamb and Barger, all in favor? Unanimous. The next item is road closure request for the Easton Lions Club for the 36th Annual Easton Holiday Festival on December 4th. We have a request from the Easton Lions Club. They're requesting a rolling street closure for Main Street from the NRT Sheep pasture entrances for the Rockery, to the Rockery for a parade that will take place from 3:00 PM to 4:00 PM, and to close off the Rockery section of Main Street from 72 Main Street down for their annual holiday festival, scheduled from 3:00 PM to 6:00 PM, also on Sunday, September, both to be scheduled on Sunday, September 4th. The request has been circulated to Public Safety and Public Works and Inspection Services, and we have the applicants here. If you both wanna come up and tell us a little bit about the holiday festival this year. So if you could introduce yourselves?
More than happy to do so.
William Palmer, Acting President of the Lions Club.
And John Morgan, Holiday Festival Chairperson, Easton Lions Club.
Great. So there's some changes happening this year, which is exciting.
Some changes in leadership, and I got reconstituted to run the holiday festival again, but it's gonna be a bit of a downsized version to what we've enjoyed in the past years, but keeping as much of the same concept and energy of the event that we could. We reduced it to a one-day event this year, Sunday, December 4th. And a keen focus is gonna be what's taking place in the parade. We pushed the parade start time back a bit. We did that to coincide with darkening hours and the lighting of the Rockery and to have Santa there for kids to come and enjoy. So the event is really gonna be focused on that parade, and then the lighting will take place, we think somewhere around 4:45 or 5:00 PM there on Sunday, December 4th. And we're working in conjunction with a smaller group of people this year to promote some things. The Eastern Women of Today are joining us in a co-promotion, offering out free hot chocolate. We're gonna be working with our Fire Department, Fire Safety, to do a similar event that we did last year, and that is having smalls and manned fire pits on the bocce courts behind the Italian Garden area, behind the library. And, and as that event winds down, the parade culminates there at the Rockery. Our O.A. Choir is gonna provide entertainment for about 45 minutes or an hour. And as we wind down the Lions Holiday Festival around that hour, Oaks Ames Hall has generously stepped forward to say they're gonna put on an event with the Cultural Council and have a live band on the lotion to entertain the crowd that's there and some invited guests from the Oaks Ames Hall. So I may have been a bit premature in asking for that street closure to terminate at 6:00 PM. You may need it to run until 6:00 there or so, so with the Board's permission, we'd like to amend accordingly.
Is there a problem ending the time?
I have no reason to think there will be. We'll just update the Public Safety Departments, and they'll coordinate that.
Could we?
One of which is here.
I'm guessing disagreeing on both sides.
Could we change it to 7:30, just to give a little bit of extra leeway in there?
Thank you, I appreciate that. And of course, we'll coordinate with the Safety Department, with Chief Alexander's team, as well as DPW. We already made appeal to DPW for lighting, traffic cones, those sorts of things. And we'll speak with the Safety Officer also about police details at that event.
Great. And is the Rain Dog Parade part of the parade?
It will. Rain Dog Parade is being hosted, co-hosted by Arun Babkuna and Tina Souza, who will be kicking that off a little bit after the parade starts. They'll be departing from the Northeastern Savings Bank parking lot, and that has grown every year. We've renamed that. It is the Gus Arn's Memorial Rain Dog Parade, because Gus Arn's, our deceased memberhead, has done so much work over the years of bringing that to existence and keeping it growing as an entertaining event. And it's not listed, limited to just rain dogs. We welcome rain goats, rain cats, rain any animal you've got, bring one, bring all. Prizes awarded for costumes. There's an entry fee for that event. You need to bring a canned good that gets donated to the MSPCA to support their causes. So we're glad to be doing that yet again, and know that'll be a big addition to the event itself.
Usually every, every year, I'm working in the fried dough booth, so I can't bring my dog. So we'll have to see if she'll wear a costume this year.
There you go, Dottie. We'll have any fried dough, but we're looking forward to having fried dough.
Yes. Excellent. Bill, did you have anything that you wanted to add?
Nope, we did everything.
All right, excellent. Well, we're hoping for great weather, 'cause we've had some good weather the past couple of years, and really excited about still being able to continue to offer this free event for the public, for people to come and bring their, their families and enjoy a nice afternoon and getting into the holiday season. Any questions or comments from the board?
No.
Just that my dog is entering this year, so I'm excited to have it.
We have no favorite taste. We'll see how you vote.
Okay, so, so if somebody would like to make a, a motion to, to have the road closure request on December 4th from 3:00 PM to 7:30?
So moved, Barger.
Second, Lamb.
All in favor? Terrific. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your support. We're so proud to be able to work with our town.
Thanks for all, thanks for all that you do for the community. All right, next we have an acceptance of a resignation from Rupsa Roy from the Green Communities Committee. Her term expired June 30th, 2024, and we have a memo in the packet. Jamie, you worked with Rupsa. Did you have anything that you wanted to mention?
Yes, I'd like to thank her and her family, her young family, for their sacrifice and commitment to the committee for as long as she was able to be part of it. Not only is she a mother with young children, but also is a adjunct faculty at Stonewall College, and she also holds down a full 50-hour-a-week job on top of that. So it was extremely kind of her to step up when we really needed someone, fill that hole, and she did a fantastic job.
That's great. Well, thank you, Rupsa, for, for being a part of that committee and being a valuable member. Then if somebody would like to make a motion in a second, and that will be a roll call vote to accept that resignation.
So moved, Barger.
Second, Lamb.
Barger and Lamb?
Barger Roy.
Lamb Roy.
Stebbins Roy.
Stacy Roy.
And Fulgenetti Roy. Terrific, thank you. Next, we have Green Committee's appointment. We have Carolyn McCafferty, McCafferty, to, to actually fill that seat. So if you wanna come up, Carolyn, just introduce yourself. Tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to serve on that committee.
Good evening, everybody. As introduced by Dottie, my name is Carolyn McCafferty. I live right down the street, and being a good Green Committee person, walked here this evening.
And even wore green.
So the, you know, environment and, and, and being a good citizen has always been a, a value of mine. I'm a recent retired Air Force civilian and have a little bit more capacity now to be able to commit to a volunteer position. And I understand how important it is to, to make a commitment for volunteering, that you, you can't just do it and, you know, raise your hand and not do anything. And so taking my passion and, and even sometimes work that I was doing up at Hanscom Air Force Base to, to help get some more green initiatives happening and, and that type of thing would be really great to bring to the town that I've lived in for 20 years now, so.
That's excellent. Jamie, do you have any questions?
So thank you, number one, for, for coming out and, and for your, again, you, you really reached out. I, I think it was great that you found, hopefully, what is gonna be.
Thank you to Mr. Reed.
Yeah, so there was, there was definitely some legwork on Carolyn's part to even kind of locate and figure out availability, and then the timing, if this works out, is right with us losing a, a member. So thank you very much for your commitment to the town and for, yeah, stepping up.
Great. Any other comments or questions? Starting with you, Jen?
No, I just think you have a great energy to you, and I, I think you have a kind of infectious vibe that we need this really important committee, so thank you for volunteering.
Thank you for volunteering.
Craig?
Thank you for volunteering, appreciate it.
So just, I should have done this before, actually, but just to let the people at home know, the mission of the Green Communities is to help raise awareness, educate, advise, and motivate the town of Easton residents and businesses to reduce waste, reduce energy use, conserve resources, reduce emissions and carbon footprint, and to embrace clean and renewable energy options. So they serve as an information resource for town residents and business owners on the benefits of energy and resource conservation, increase constituents' awareness of resource conservation methods, energy efficiency programs, utility rebates, and state and federal programs to promote energy efficiency, waste reduction and recycling, and overall enhancements to long-term sustainability and resilience in response to environmental resource and energy challenges to promote and act as the selection committee for the Greenest of Easton Award. And the committee reports annually on its activities to the Select Board. So originally, the Green Communities was a designation for a community to be able to get state grants for certain energy initiatives. We still continue to get those grants, although we've, we've gotten a lot of grants, done a lot of great things with that money. But we've had such enthusiasm from committee members to really focus on working with the community for some of these initiatives, and we have a lot of things going on. You know, we have drought, we have a lot of climate issues. We just found out that we cannot do mattress disposal anymore, or textile disposal has to be handled differently. And I know that the Green Communities have done an amazing job being at the NRT, going to the schools, talking about recycling. These things are all so important, so to have your expertise added to the, the group that's already working hard at this is, is really gonna be terrific.
Great. Well, thank you.
We appreciate you putting your hat in the ring. So if somebody would like to make a motion to appoint Carolyn McCafferty for a term expiring June 30th, 2024, to the Green Communities, and this is roll call outside.
So moved, Barger.
Second, Lamb.
Barger and Lamb?
Barger McCafferty.
Lamb McCafferty.
Stebbins McCafferty.
Stacy McCafferty.
And Fulgenetti McCafferty. So you'll get a notice from the Town Clerk's office. You'll have to get sworn in, and they'll give you the next meeting date and schedule, and you're in.
Okay, great. Well, thank you very much. I look forward to working, doing this work with the town.
Yeah, Carolyn, thank you. I look forward to seeing you in our next meeting, too. Thank you very much.
Great. Okay, next we have a discussion and vote on intermunicipal agreements between the town of Easton and the towns of West Bridgewater and Rehoboth. Chief, you wanna come up? So this is for Fire Department Apparatus Maintenance Services.
Correct. Thank you for having me tonight. There's still a few firsts for me, as I'm spending time here. This is my first in-person meeting with the Select Board.
Wow.
Yes.
I didn't realize that.
Yep. So, no, so thank you all. So, and I will say that Chief Boone is great with the Lions' time change as well. We're good there.
Great.
The purpose of me being here tonight was that we, when I first came to town, we, we'll take a look at our maintenance program. One, for transparency, I'm an apparatus mechanic. I've been one for a long time. So took a look at our fleet, took a look what we were doing, took a look at what our expenditures were, and as you all know, we ended up hiring a Fire Department mechanic, full-time for us. And it's been paying dividends with our fleet, our reliability, and all these things have been very, very beneficial. But we took a wholesale look at, can we do more with our mechanic? And the answer was yes, and one thing that's identified is that there is very limited bandwidth within the commercial apparatus repair companies out there. They make you wait weeks to get in, and it's tough to get service. The rates are different, they're higher. It's a lot of things. And so there's an appetite within area fire departments to have an alternative means of fleet maintenance. So we had a discussion, Connor, and we decided that it would be great to establish an outside maintenance program to offset our own maintenance costs. And West Bridgewater and Rehoboth are our first two customers. So with the approval of these IMAs, we will be able to provide maintenance for both of those towns, keep their fleets going. It's a financial benefit to Easton. We'll be able to, as it grows, offset our own maintenance costs and equipment costs. So, and that's the end goal. So we'll have a, a, benefit our area neighbors and have a financial benefit to Easton, and we'll be in good shape because of it. So I'm very proud of it. I think Tim Hicks, our fleet mechanic, is doing an outstanding job, and will carry the ball with us and make it very successful.
Terrific. Any questions? Wanna start with you, Jen?
Say it's a really smart way to do more with less and turn, find an opportunity, so I really, great work.
Yeah, likewise. Fantastic, Chief.
Yeah, outstanding. Just a quick question about bandwidth. So he has the bandwidth to serve other communities?
So we waited pretty much a year for him to get his hands around our fleet and get it where it needs to be, and he's done a great job with that. And so we're, we're, West Bridgewater and Rehoboth are, are two smaller, slower departments, and they're great departments to start with. And then we'll take a look at how much he's doing then, with the, have them onboard and going. And also, you know, we're also facility limited as well, so we can only grow so much due to limitations within our own maintenance facility. So we'll have to take a look at that going forward to see where that goes. And if we, things change, then we could change our bandwidth. But we're gonna be real careful to make sure he doesn't get overloaded to the point that he can't maintain our fleet.
Right. That was my next question, which is, you know, it goes without saying, but I have to ask, Easton's fleet is priority always, of course?
Absolutely.
Okay. Outstanding.
Did we approach West Bridgewater and Rehoboth, or did they approach us?
I approached them more so to network in a conversation, like, oh, I've got a broken truck. Or hey, I've got an idea for you. And they, so they came in, and they were like, this would be unbelievable if you can help us out with this. So it was definitely a mutual conversation. A lot of the stuff that happens, the networking is so important at the fire service, and once they hear about something going on like this, they, they do it. Another town that does do something similar is Foxborough. They do something similar. I had the idea a couple of years ago, and I, I always tell Chief Kelleher that he copied me, but he started first, so I guess he wins. But it works out pretty well. Foxborough does Norfolk, Rentham, and Franklin's fleet in their facility.
Just a quick question on that is, how many maintenance personnel does, like, Foxborough have? Is it, I assume, more than one?
So they run it a little bit different. Their staff, their mechanics are actually firefighters on the line, who are certified mechanics who do the maintenance on overtime. Chief Kelleher is working towards moving them to, or at least one of them to daytime, because he's realizing that the bandwidth issue is there between trying to work on overtime on their days off and trying to go on calls on their days on. So, but, because there's just so much appetite for this type of maintenance, 'cause it just doesn't exist right now, it's so hard. So he's feeling that bandwidth crunch as well, 'cause Franklin, Rentham, and Norfolk are sizable. When you add them all together, there's a lot of trucks there. So, but we'll, but we're starting a little bit small, small bite, and get it going, get it settled. You know, there's, there's something to be said for, you know, I, I think having the intimate knowledge and understanding what it's like to be part of the fire service and coming at maintenance from the, the inside, we can, instead of outsourcing it, we can do better insourcing, and we can provide a better dialogue with the chiefs to explain what's going on, we kinda speak their language. So I, I think it's a really successful model, and has a lot of potential for the future.
I would just add, the chief deserves a lot of credit, as does mechanic Hicks, who's been doing an awesome job. Shortly after the chief started, he approached me and said, hey, I can in-house do service we currently do through contracted out services, which is pretty standard for a lot of public sector work. For the same amount of money, with a higher level of service, and there's growth potential in the future where we could bring other folks onboard and create a revolving fund to offset specialized work that we can't do in-house. And, no offense, chief, but normally when you get told something that sounds like it might be totally untrue, you're a little skeptical, and so we worked through it and ran the idea to ground. And we worked with Public Works, right? So Foxborough has firefighter service. It was the civilian mechanic who works in the Fire Department, but is actually in the DPW union. So the, so Public Works leadership and their union was awesome about working this out, because in addition to having it so that if there is downtime, we can now maybe bring in other apparatus from other communities and actually generate revenue for Easton. There's also provisions in there that provide remitting requirements within the DPW union contract that Tim can help out with non-fire apparatus mechanic needs to elsewhere in town. So it's been really an awesome thing to see.
And, Mr. Hicks, is he a one-man show doing all this?
He is, yeah. He's one-man show, and we're tired.
His first day was an ambulance, right?
So, yeah, I mean, don't wanna steal your beating, but a, a really quick story about that is, we had, when he was starting, well, a few weeks before we started, we had an engine let go on one of our ambulances. It was, it was done, the ambulance was out of service, and it was like $20-plus thousand to have it changed commercially. And we got him onboard, and I was, and I knew that I could get a running engine, rebuild engine for $13,000 in pieces. And he got it, and I had it, I had it in the shop, and brought him in for his interview and told him that if he was successful getting hired, just had a go in that truck. And he still took the job. And his first, his first act was, was changing that engine, and I can tell you, if anybody knows anything about Ford chassis.
How long did it take him?
Um, I don't know how many hours it took him, but he did it in combination with dealing with the rest of the fleet. I think he did it in about three weeks. So, 'cause he was still dealing with other trucks, so it takes the same time, but.
No pieces left over?
Nope. Honestly, I was, I was wondering, I was like, I wonder when he goes to start this thing for the first time, is it really gonna run? I'll tell you what, I, as a mechanic, it would have been a real challenge for me. I, I don't think I could have done it. And he, he's just at a higher level. I say I'm a mechanic, he's a technician. And he got in and turned the key, and the thing just ran. And it was, it was incredible, so I mean, that's.
It's hard to do with one person.
Yeah, I knew right then we had the right person. And then, you know, Connor's point, we, he's helped the DPW already a few times. They've been in a pinch with a couple of trucks down, broken, and, and we can, we work together, and it's a good relationship. And so I, I think it benefits not just buyer, but the whole town.
I think it's a great idea. One of the things that I liked the best about you when we first met was you had a lot of ideas for different ways to tweak things or provide a little bit more efficiencies, thinking out of the box. And, you know, that's what we really like to see in our department heads and staff, people that take the initiative to think out of the box, 'cause you don't really have to. I mean, you can kinda do your job and just.
Go through the day.
Go through the day. So, and, you know, with making those decisions, like Connor said, you know, being a little skeptical, although I can hardly imagine that. You know, you're, you're also taking a risk, right? Because you're, if it doesn't work, then your big idea, so those, I just, I think that that's really great. I think the efficiency that that provides is great, but the cost savings on top of that is awesome. And then to take it, you know, another step further, to be able to work with community towns to bring in a little bit more money. Maybe at some point, we bring somebody on as an apprentice to, to him. And it's needed, because I know that you, the fire service works regionally to support each other when one town needs more support, and some of these smaller towns would never be able to do something like that. So to be able to help them out, I think is a really good thing.
I believe a lot in a regional model, like, it's gonna be the Semerac, right, with the previous dispatch, and I was part of it. I've got a few other ideas, but I want Connor to have gray hair, too, or something. A little bit at a time, a little bit at a time, so.
You're pacing the good ideas.
Just a little bit, just, just enough to stay in the mirror.
No, well, we really appreciate that and excited to hear about it. So in the, in the IMA, we have to vote to, to enter into these agreements, and then they've been vetted by Town Council.
Yes.
And there's no, no problems doing this, so.
All right, but just an administrative question. Dottie, can you be yourself or me? It's for board. the board's preference, but I would ask that the two votes be separate, because they're different IMAs, and have the board assign someone to sign on behalf of the town. So we could either read myself or, or Dottie, whatever the board would like. It's fine by me.
Okay. So, why don't we have, you can, you can sign them, Connor. So if somebody wants to make the first motion to enter into the IMA with West Bridgewater, having Connor be the signatory on it?
So moved, Roger.
Second, Lamb.
Roger and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous? And the next one to motion, the same, to enter into an IMA with Rehoboth, and also to have Connor be the signatory on that?
So moved, Roger.
Second, Lamb.
All in favor? Unanimous? That was easy. Well, thank you, and welcome on your first, first night here.
In person anyways. Absolutely. Thank you all. Appreciate it. Thank you for having me.
It's hard to tell the difference, because sometimes this room doubles as a voting facility, so.
That's right. I actually came in, I was surprised. The first time I've seen the whole setup, the person, so, it was nice. I feel indoctrinated now, so, you know, we're just playing COVID. But thank you all for having me. Appreciate the support.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Chief. Have a good day.
Okay, next, number eight, the discussion and vote setting of the Select Board 2023 meeting schedule. We have an attached proposed meeting schedule. And once these are determined, the boards coordinate their meetings accordingly. So we looked through it for any major holidays or, or things that we could flag or, or take a look at. So, anybody notice anything that would be a conflict for them? And we, we can always change or bump something if we have to.
Through it too, and I didn't see any conflict.
At this moment, no.
Elizabeth, correct me if I'm wrong, but we incorporated the board this summer, moved your meeting scheduled every three weeks from, I think, Memorial Day till Labor Day, which was great. So I think this reflects.
That.
That's great.
Mostly.
Yes, mostly. There's a couple in there, you know, flagged for the week of Thanksgiving. We might move that as we get closer, but we'll figure that out.
Okay. All right. So, does anybody want to make a motion to accept the Select Board 2023 meeting schedule?
So moved, Roger.
Second, Lamb.
Roger and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous? And just for people at home that might be watching, you can go on the town's website, under Boards and Committees, look for Select Board, and you'll see our calendar on that page. If you want to know when we're meeting or you're trying to get a liquor license permit or things like that, you need to have them in earlier, a couple of weeks earlier than our meeting. So just keep that in mind if you need to appear or show up at a Select Board meeting. So next, we have the Town Administrator update for the Municipal Facilities Replacement, Police, Fire, DPW, and Feasibility Planning.
Sure. Thank you, Dottie. So we have been keeping this on most of our agendas, just as a standing update, so I can keep the board in the loop as the Municipal Building Committee process unfolds and answer any questions that may come up along the way. Municipal Building Committee, I do not think has met since they picked the preferred alternative on October 4th, which I'm realizing was only a month ago, but feels like a very long time ago. And I just have a few bullet points to tick through from the design team working on this, and I'm happy to take any questions. So, site borrowings began both at 524 Depot Street as well as at Daley's Corner on Sono's property last month. Those were preliminary geotechnical analysis have, has come back looking fine. No major issues there on either site, which is good. Building layouts are moving internally for police, fire, and Public Works with the designers. Site layout are beginning, are underway to get a more detailed assessment than what we've seen, you know, relatively crude, just illustrative examples of this is what some massing could look like. So they're starting to actually refine that. And they're beginning the process of evaluating building systems, age back, things of that nature. A big part is if the design team is finalizing the actual feasibility study report. We do get a physical report at the end of that process that we have. That's important for posterity and a variety of other reasons, but we will get a, an actual report. I'm sure that that will go to Municipal Building Committee and will share it with the Select Board and put it online when it's done. I think that the current plan is that sometime after Thanksgiving, the MBC will be re-engaged publicly for more regular updates, again, as we move through schematic design.
Terrific. That's great. And people that are interested in following the progress on this, this is on the town website?
It is. It's easton.m-a.us/mbc.
Municipal Building Committee, MBC. Okay. Terrific. Any comments or questions?
Oh, none.
I just want to say that that's a really great committee, when I have watched some of those meetings, a lot of really interesting discussion. And I enjoyed watching a meeting that I wasn't getting action items from.
Yes, no, they're, they're awesome. There's, and Jamie can attest to it as well, as chief, who's been there, is just a really, really impressive, deep bench of, of knowledge and expertise, engineers, architects, you know, construction folks, civil engineers, really, really incredible. If you think about, you know, the demands of careers like that, and those folks are volunteering their time for it. So we really appreciate those citizens' time and effort.
Excellent. Well, thank you for the update. All right. Next, we have an executive session under Purpose 3 of Master General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with Fire Local 2790, IAAF, and the Southeastern Public Employees Association Water Division Unit, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and the chair so declares. So we are going to have a motion, a second, a roll call, vote to enter into executive session. We are going to come back into open session after that. Will probably be about ten, fifteen minutes, maybe not even that long. So, Craig, if you want to make a motion?
So moved, Roger.
Second, Lamb.
Roger and Lamb?
Roger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stacy, yes.
And Full Genetti, yes. Thank you. So ECAT, if you want to shut us off for about fifteen?
It's so crazy how fast. I'm loving my life is on me right now. It's like, like, muffled nieces.
Yes.
And then my nephew and niece, they're both three, two. So it's like...
Not the nighttime stuff.
I don't do what they ask. And my kids are funny. Do they want to help take care of us? Like brothers and their partners. This is awesome. Like, the big kids come along and...
All right, we are back. Pleased to say that we just met an executive session to ratify the contracts for fire local 2790 IAFF and Southeastern Public Employees Association Water Division unit. Both contracts were successful. We are going to take another vote here for the public. So if somebody would like to make a motion, and this will be for firefighter local 2790, make a motion to ratify that contract.
So move, Roger.
Second, Lamb.
Roger and Lamb, and roll call vote.
Pardon, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Stephen, yes.
Stacy, yes.
And full Janetti, yes. And then also a motion to ratify the Southeastern Public Employees Association Water Division unit.
So move, Roger.
Second, Lamb.
Roger and Lamb, roll call vote.
Pardon, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Stephen, yes.
Stacy, yes.
And full Janetti, yes. And on behalf of the select board, I would just like to say that we really appreciate the successful contract negotiations between both unions, for that matter, all of our unions, the great work that Town Administrator Connor Reed did, also with our department heads. And, you know, we were really grateful to the people that work for our town and our staff. And we're really happy this board unanimously voted for these. And it just shows that we're really appreciative that these contracts can be negotiated and hopefully everybody finds value in them. So next, we have, let me see, the acceptance of minutes dated October 24.
So move, Roger.
Second, Lamb.
Roger and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous? Town Administrator knows.
Sure, I'd just like to add to what you said, Dottie. Appreciate the support of the board and working with the board on successful collective bargaining round. And appreciate all of our union leadership and their members to have this level of cooperation. This can be a tough labor environment, an economic environment, for sure. And so it's really wonderful to be able to work with our employees this way and to reach amicable resolutions so quickly during a negotiating session. So I appreciate all their effort there as well. It's the election tomorrow. So speaking of appreciating employees, super appreciative of the Town Clerk's office and the large group of poll workers helping out. That's amazing stuff.
for these. And it just shows that we're really appreciative that these contracts can be negotiated and hopefully everybody finds value in them. So next we have, let me see, the acceptance of minutes dated October 24.
Solo, Bajra.
Second, Lamb.
Bajra and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous? Town Administrator notes.
Sure, I'd just like to add to what you said, Doty. Appreciate the support of the board and working with the board on successful collective bargaining round. And appreciate all of our union leadership and their members to have this level of cooperation. This can be a tough labor environment, an economic environment, for sure. And so it's really wonderful to be able to work with our employees this way and to reach amicable resolutions so quickly during negotiating sessions. So I appreciate all their effort there as well. It's the election tomorrow. So speaking of appreciating employees, super appreciative of the Town Clerk's office and the large group of poll workers helping out. That's amazing stuff that they're doing. I'm not going to try and give the exact hours because I have a feeling you have the Town Crier open to read that. You usually do, so I don't want to get something wrong. But the election is tomorrow. Appreciate all the work of our election officials for helping make democracy work. We have Veterans Day this week that our Deputy Director of Veteran Services, Coria Honan, will be leading ceremonies on. So appreciate his efforts in our veterans community. And then we have town meeting on Monday at 7 o'clock at Oak Sees Mural Hall. So we really hope people come out for that. It's a very short warrant.
Oliver Ames.
Oliver Ames.
What did I say?
Four times.
Oh, I'm sorry. Looking at CPA agendas too much. Oliver Ames High School. Thank you, Michael. 7 o'clock on Monday before 14th. Short warrant, but really important substantive stuff for budget, building our reserves, and the authorization to go through a bid process to sell Center School Mural Hall. And there's also going to be a vaccine clinic at town meeting. We have vote and vax for night of town meeting. There's information for registering that on our social media pages in the Town Crier and on our website as well. So thanks to all of our staff for making all those things possible.
That's great. So the hours to vote at Oliver Ames High School, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And really encourage everybody to get there. Really important to vote in these elections always. And I'm grateful for the ability to be able to vote. So I try to never miss one. All right, Craig.
Nothing.
Nothing?
Nothing.
Mark?
I had nothing.
Jamie?
Looking forward to Veterans Day again, and hopefully kids having the day off. Maybe we'll see a few more children again. Like, I think it was, was it Veterans Day?
Memorial Day?
Oh, maybe it was Memorial Day. So maybe we have an opportunity here to, as part of the parade, to get some families and young children involved and, you know, share in that community of, you know, what I think is wonderful. This town does such a great job in honoring our veterans and I think exposing the, you know, next generation is really important, too. So I hope a lot of families come up.
I think that's great. And when we had the last parade, you guys all brought all your little kids. I just, I thought that was just so awesome to see you walking. Like, that's something your kids will always remember, walking with parents through a parade like that. So I'm looking forward to that.
Great.
I've been up in ads. I've been covered. Looking forward to Friday as well, though.
So I'll just say, you know, when I go down to Southeastern by the Center School, going through that intersection every time is another improvement every single time. And having the monument moved, it's really transformational there. So I can't wait to see the traffic signals go in. But they've really done an amazing job. And I know it's been a challenge for the people that live in that area. So I appreciate all of their patience. And I hope that when this is done, they'll be as enthusiastic about it. It's going to be really great for that area. And speaking of construction, the Lincoln Street sidewalk construction, I just kind of saw that pop up out of the blue. It feels like it just appeared.
Yes. Public Works is extraordinarily busy. They're doing an awesome job. That was funded with, I believe, Complete Streets grant funding mostly. I think that was a $400,000 grant we received in Public Works. Just got it in the queue before the snow comes and...
It's incredible.
It's looking great.
It's going to be a good thing.
So much on their plate, and they're absolutely crushing it.
So they've been awesome.
Well, I was talking to somebody that was formerly on the select board that was very shocked and said that that was the thing they really wanted to get done during their